Good afternoon, everyone. Today is January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is a City of Prescott City Council's study session. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ken Tellmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I'm here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We have two items on our agenda today for this study session. Item number A, the first one, is presentation and discussion regarding establishment of a Citizens Sustainability and Resiliency Advisory Committee.
And I believe Patrick Grady is here to provide that presentation.
Did you have a comment, City Manager?
No, other than, I believe, Councilmember Rusing brought this item.
Yes, I'd like to say that this group of very concerned citizens, this has been in the works for many years, and they'll be sure and give you the rest of the details. It was me, and my second was Mr. Moore.
Thank you, members of City Council and Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity to be before you. My name is Patrick Grady. I'm the board president of the Quad City Climate Collaborative. I reside in Prescott at nine forty-three West Rossar Street. Just a little bit of bio, I've been involved with the Avapi Climate Change Coalition and this newly-named organization since arriving in Prescott in two thousand and seventeen. And I'm also involved with a group, the Interfaith Climate Action Team. And in my previous professional life, I was deputy director of planning and economic development for the city of Columbus. And a few months after that, I became the director of the city of Phoenix and their community and economic development department, where I served for five years. It's a little bit of my background, and this is my colleague, Kristin Law.
Yes, Kristin Law, and I reside at twenty-two-hundred Forest Mountain Road in Prescott, and I am also on the board of the Climate Coalition. I have recently retired from Honeywell down in the valley as an executive-level director of strategy and marketing. And in the early part of my career, I was a research scientist in chemistry and geology.
So, thank you. We're here today to talk about the potential of creating a citizen advisory working group to address issues, help address issues in our community around sustainability and resiliency. The proposal would be a volunteer committee comprised of members that would have expertise in sustainable and best practices. The purpose is, as you can see in our PowerPoint, is to augment city resources, really increase the capacity of our city staff to assist in the implementation of some of your priorities. Particularly, we'll go into a little bit later, the twenty-five-twenty-nine strategic plan, which, one of the items focusing on the natural environment. And we'll do, talk a little bit about the two thousand and twenty-five general plan and some of the chapters in there that are critical to, one, our competitive economy, as well as to sustainability goals that I think we all generally agree on. So, the genesis of all this goes back several years, when you unanimously, a previous city council, I might add, unanimously approved moving forward on a climate profile for the Quad Cities. At the same time, our organization created a climate action option report that was in your package, which identified a broad number of actions in various areas, including water resources, wildfire protection, flooding, energy use, and capacity building. And those were both published in February of two thousand and twenty-three, and we were really helped out by a working group that we put together that comprised stakeholders from Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, and Prescott, including city staff from those communities. And that proved to be helpful in reviewing the Quad City climate profile, as well as contributing to the actual local climate report. So today, we're here to focus on, so, you know, why a citizen working group around sustainability and resiliency. And we feel that there's a lot of benefits with this working group, and we want to tell you more about that. And we want to close with a specific request to support one of two options that we're suggesting, either creating a sustainability and resiliency advisory committee to the city council, or potentially a working group reporting and engaged with the city administration.
So first, talking a little bit about the benefits. We think the benefits are really substantial for putting together a volunteer unpaid group to help the city with items that are already in your strategic plan and are in the draft general plan. We are a group of folks with a variety of expertise across a number of technical areas, from energy policy and renewables, to wildlife management, to hydrology, geology, and water, as well as, you heard from Patrick, city management. And importantly, business analysis and economic benefit analysis, which is an area of my expertise, because anything we do, we need to positively impact the community with regards to cost savings or improvement of economic competitiveness of the city. So we feel like this is a great way to supplement staff resources, to try to achieve the goals that you have outlined. Our primary...
Can you speak to the mic, please? We can't hear you.
Thank you. Hopefully, this is better. Our primary focus will be on research and analysis of best practices and making data and fact-based recommendations for you to review with regards to your particular policies. And some of the things that we think are important initially are really looking at budget savings opportunities, such as energy efficiency, whether it's an energy audit, implementation of current facilities that you have, or working with, say, Simpo on regional transport plans that would also include electric vehicle chargers to be able to attract those high-quality day-trip tourists to our area. And a final thing that we think is a really key benefit is that having a group like this, whether it's an official committee or just a more casual working group, really provides a sense of responsiveness to some of the inputs that you have received from the citizens. On the right lower side of the slide, you can see a chart that was pulled directly from a citizens' survey that was taken at the end of two thousand and twenty-three and published in January of two thousand and twenty-four. And circled at the very top is natural environment. The horizontal axis here, I know it's hard to read in the back, is really what citizens who were surveyed said was most important to them with regards to livability, whereas the vertical axis is their current perception of the quality of that particular aspect of livability. And the fact that natural environment sticks right on the top, and it's just slightly behind the economy as being a top-important driver for livability in the city. And so we would like to help you maintain that high quality of natural environment, because that's a really good marketing and promotional method for the city to attract businesses, younger workers in particular, and also tourism dollars.
One of the key areas, which is, speaks to really, why now? Why are we here before you? Is that we're going through the planning process, it's in Planning and Zoning Commission now, relative to our two thousand and twenty-five general plan. Our group has actually submitted four white papers to the city, many of which recommendations are actually contained in the draft plan. And so we feel this, the timing of this general plan fits right in with our proposal from two years ago, to look at creating Sustainability and Resiliency Advisory Committee. So there are several chapters that clearly relate to the issues and concerns that we're bringing before you, and the first chapter, of course, is resiliency and sustainability. There are actually over fifty-two strategies contained in that particular chapter that deals with fire, air quality, you know, different water goals, green infrastructure for stormwater management, water resources itself. They all interconnect, and in the area of environmental planning, we think there's significant opportunity for providing ideas and research that would assist the city. In the area of climate and energy use, which is clearly in our wheelhouse, there are actually five goals, and I'm just going to quickly read them, because you can hear how they interconnect. And also, the language in the general plan, you'll see a lot of words, engage, partner, develop, encourage, strengthen, identify and evaluate. That's what we think the advisory committee could do, working with the city and providing research, counsel, looking at grant opportunities and the like. Goal one in that draft plan is empower community members to make smarter energy choices through education. Goal two, promote energy efficiency for new design and retrofit of public, commercial, and residential buildings. Goal three, create and utilize business models that reduce the cost of retrofitting energy efficiency into existing buildings. The first strategy, by the way, in that particular goal is evaluate process and implementation of municipal energy audit to measure and identify areas with energy-saving opportunities. Goal four, leverage the natural environment, once again, to reduce heating and cooling energy needs. And goal five, accommodate electric vehicle users to reduce vehicle emissions while promoting Prescott as an EV tourist destination through accessible charging infrastructure. You know, again, all of these topics talk about evaluation. Community-connected chapter focuses on wildlife corridors and open space. I know you're discussing that topic this afternoon at three. The economic competitiveness chapter is very important, because I know of your concerns with our revenue sources, which is largely based on tourism. And I can speak as someone engaged with this issue in other communities, that economic competitiveness is key to future sustainability. And looking at other communities who are our competitors, like Sedona and Flagstaff and other best practices, will put us in a better economic position in the long run. And we find that the topics of resiliency and sustainability are also on the minds of corporate business seekers, those that are making location decisions, which is also true for workers, looking to determine, well, where do we want to be? And they look at factors like this with respect to cities' concern and interest and focus on these kind of connections across those topics.
And I think you can see here, the statistics here are really interesting. So Deloitte surveyed twenty-two-thousand Gen Z and millennials, so these are folks in their twenties up to their mid-forties. And what they're looking for when they choose a place to live or an employer, and the fact that sixty percent of them actually researched the environmental policies of the companies they're planning to work for, I found that number quite striking. I was actually quite surprised. And seventy-five percent asking local and national governments to do more in these areas. That part maybe didn't strike me so much. What we don't have on here is an additional forty percent of these young folks have either already left companies that they work for because of environmental concerns, or are planning to within the next twelve months. And Deloitte does this survey every year, so that's pretty amazing, I think. So going on to maybe more near term, looking at your current strategic plan for the fiscal year, you do have priority number four is around preserving the natural environment, and that's mostly what we've spoken to so far. But the second priority of economic, I think, is really critical here. We talked about attracting new business and environment being a key with regards to younger folks moving in, which we know we all need, given our demographics in the region. But implementing the municipal energy audit, and I believe all of you have seen a copy of the Schneider Electric business case analysis done on city infrastructure, this is an area where our group could potentially help you to do additional analysis and research best practices that other cities of similar size to Prescott have worked on. I'm sure you've seen the data from Prescott Valley, where they're going to be saving just under twelve million dollars over the lifetime of their project from the phase one that they implemented from Schneider Electric. Flagstaff also did similar work, only they did it without the support of a larger company like Schneider. But they're achieving forty-two percent annual savings in utilities across all of their utilities, from water to electric and gas. And that's fairly, that's obviously very substantial. The other thing our group could help you do in this area is to research other companies besides Schneider. Schneider is one of the top-ranked companies here, but assuming you would go out to competitive bid, other folks, Siemens, Honeywell, Trane, Johnson Controls, all provide these same kind of energy performance savings contracts. And they might have different terms that might be more favorable with regards to how much upfront versus how much they take in energy savings. So all those terms are negotiable. You know, having previously worked for Honeywell, just disclaimer there, that wasn't my exact division, but I do know that all those terms are very negotiable. And so we could potentially help you with some of that business case area, if you wish. And you can see the bar chart on the right that comes directly from the energy audit, so significant savings with regard to utilities in green, maintenance and operations, that's the gray bar chart, and then capital cost avoidance, and then at very top in sort of yellow, these are grants. And Schneider did provide a list of some grants that are out there, but that is another area where this committee could research grant opportunities that are out there. Several of us that are involved in this have written grants, myself included, Patrick and others, and are very familiar with grant-writing process. Obviously, grant sources may change with the new administration, so it'll be important to keep on top of that, so that we don't miss any grants. So for example, when Prescott Valley implemented their Schneider Electric proposal, the first phase of it, they got a five-million-dollar grant from the governor's office. Unfortunately, that money had to be allocated by December of two thousand and twenty-four, so that bucket of money is not available to Prescott, but there may be other buckets out there. And so those are some of the things we would like to do to improve our competitive advantage versus, say, the Flagstaffs and Sedonas that are out there. And one thing with regards to Flagstaff and Sedona, both of them have official, either sustainability full offices or directors. We're not proposing Prescott do that, but in lieu of that staff person, perhaps you can rely on us as citizens to help fill those particular gaps.
So in closing with this brief presentation, just wanted to go over some of our closing ideas. The purpose, as you can see, and we've reinforced through our conversation today, is research and review best practices. There are sustainability committees at different cities, not just Phoenix and Tucson, but other parts of Arizona and across the country, large and small cities. And so there's a lot of opportunity for good-quality research to, you know, improve our focus on sustainability that's called for in the general plan. So again, looking at proposed actions and projects in energy conservation, low-impact development, nature-based tourism and wildlife management, with, as we pointed out, a focus on economic benefits, a focus on cost savings, as outlined in both the strategic and the general plan. We have not spoken to wildfires. I was actually thinking of making an opening statement about the horrific situation that we have currently in Los Angeles area. But there's really positive steps being taken by this general plan. The two thousand and fifteen general plan was actually silent on wildfires. This comes right out and says that we're susceptible to wildfires, and if we can be helpful in that area, well and good, but that's not what we've outlined here. And then in addition to that, obviously, we have other groups and other committees of city council focusing on water resources. So we've identified two potential options. You may have others. One is the more, I'll say, traditional, city council authorized citizens committee, typically seven to eleven members, you've done this in the area of workforce development and water and elsewhere, city staff typically appointed to support that function. And, you know, obviously, such an official committee creates some credibility and accountability. Another organizational option we believe worth considering is a citizens' working group on sustainability. This is kind of à la the model of a C WAG, which many of you are a part of, and the expertise that they've provided to the city over the years, particularly of late, has been immeasurable. And that's, again, citizens with expertise in water issues, providing advice to your priorities, not their priorities. Another good example is Yavapai Firewise, very much engaged in neighborhoods and working with the fire department and emergency management and other partners to provide boots-on-the-ground and specific actions, working with our citizens. And again, that's a volunteer group. Both options would obviously be a volunteer group, and they would be doing this for free, which is obviously something to consider. The second option delves into specific sustainability projects prioritized not by the working group, but by the city, in this case, by city staff. So we, whoever "we" is and ends up being, would be that arm that they could turn to do the kind of research that we've talked about, perhaps, particularly with all the projects that we've identified. I had mentioned that there were fifty-some in the chapter on resiliency and sustainability. There are forty-some in the document that we provided you, the Local Action Options Climate Report. So there's a wide range of opportunity for such a citizen group to, like we've mentioned, augment city staff resources. We also think this particular approach might have more flexible scheduling, more flexible reporting, and more timely responses to city priorities. So in closing, we're requesting your support to create a citizens' sustainability and resilience advisory committee, or the working group on sustainability. And we think that at this juncture of where we are in the general plan, this is good timing to consider this opportunity. And we also think that this group can provide added value to the city moving forward in the sustainable future we all desire.
Councilmember Rusing.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and bringing your expertise to us today and offering to partner with the city. There's one member that's not here, Mr.?
Greg Murray.
Greg Murray, yes. And what are...
Is that a wildlife corridor conference?
Yes, okay. And he's also, what was his educational... And he's also, what was his educational background?
He was a 30, has his doctorate focused on biology and ecology, and he was a 30-year professor at Hope College in Michigan.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to this building. Saving energy saves taxpayer dollars, and wasting energy wastes taxpayers' dollars. And I think everyone here is a fiscal conservative and would agree with that. We've owned this building for three years, and I've been in here on weekends, holidays, when it's not occupied. And it does not have programmable thermostats, which are recommended in the energy audit. And so this is almost a 30,000 square foot building. The HVAC system runs 24/7. You'll notice right now the air conditioning is running. I go back in my office, the heat's running. There's lights in here that you cannot turn off. If you go out in that main hallway, you could do neurosurgery out there. There's so many lights on, and they're on 24/7. Now, for fiscally responsible public officials, I think it's time that we swing into action, implement this committee. They're designed to be minimally stressful on staff time. They only want to meet quarterly, but they would like to partner with us and share their expertise. We spend $4.6 million a year on utilities for power, gas, and water. I think there's probably room for improvement. So I had invited Mr. Brandon Woodward of Schneider Electric up here to give us a brief talk about his audit, but unfortunately, he was tied up. I'd like to bring him back in the future here to explain the energy audit more. But I think it's time that we start implementing some of these, some of these things we've already started to implement. But I think that the elected officials here need to step up and start saving energy and saving the taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
I want to commend you on a very professional presentation. And I'm glad that you referenced the 2023 survey and specifically the quadrant analysis, which is kind of in my wheelhouse. And if I remember my quadrant analysis properly, those in the southeast corner, you know, the least quality, most important, need to be addressed. So I would hope that someone would present, there's two entries in there, one is economy, one is healthcare. I hope someone would come and present as compelling a presentation as you have on economy and health and welfare. I do have a question. You had a slide that referenced the strategic plan, and you made reference to the energy audit, and you talked about tax credits and rebates. Where would those tax credits and rebates go?
So current tax credits and rebates, there are a number available through the Inflation Reduction Act. There are also a number of tax credits available from the Department of Energy across quite a few different areas. There are also specific tax credits for rural communities, targeted specifically at rural communities. That is something that you have to apply for, and they would go to the city to go for specific projects.
So basically, on the federal or state level?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo what Councilmember Rusi and Councilman Gamboji said. I appreciate the professionalism of your presentation. It was thorough and very interesting. I had one question. I guess, in my thinking, especially in light of some of the kind of, as you alluded to, Patrick, the fire danger that we've seen in Los Angeles coming to fruition, and the awareness we have around that today. And I guess the thing that I think about is danger and risk like that doesn't know municipal boundaries, right? I think about, I had a conversation with someone this morning, talking about Yavapai Hills and Diamond Valley. You know, Diamond Valley, not in Prescott, Yavapai Hills is. And the idea of kind of thinking about ingress and egress out of those communities in case of fire danger or major congestion on 69. And this leads me to my question, which is, I appreciate the idea of organizing this under the city. I guess because that risk that we are looking at is not a risk that knows boundaries, I wonder if there might be a way of approaching this where you seek to do it in a regional collaboration method, where it's similar to some sort of structure like what Simbo does have right now, where you have representatives from the various communities that are kind of there to hear it out. And I think there'd be value in that. And in some ways, I think it would be more powerful to have that collaboration happening. And I just, that's just a thought. I'm not trying to throw cold water or anything you're presenting today, just what came to up mind to me when I was watching your presentation.
Well, I think that's very true. One of our members of the Quad City Climate Collaborative is actually, has approached the county on the need for a similar type commission for their area, where, like you're also suggesting, there would be representatives from the different communities in our region to address some of those areas. Now, Yavapai Firewise is more regional in nature. And we think that even at this local level, we need to develop into, not develop, we need to delve into our local projects, which you're absolutely right, it needs to be done in the midst of a regional framework.
And I think that part of the reason I think about this, too, is when we look at, if Prescott Valley is already implementing the Snyder report, like are the efficiencies that Snyder brought to them, I wonder if they don't already have best practices that they can share with our staff around those things, where we're not duplicating work, and also where we're kind of, and again, I think about C WAG, Citizens Water Agribusiness Group, acting in a similar capacity, where they're looking at the broad aquifer, which does not know municipal boundaries, right? It's all Prescott area, active management area, but it's not, that's not Prescott alone, it's Prescott, Prescott Valley, Central Valley, the county unincorporated part. So I like the idea of a broader approach, only because I think you get more bang for your buck that way, and you get everyone kind of identifying the areas of regional cooperation where, you know, we can learn best practices and improve efficiency. So just a, you know, food for thought. But I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. Interagency and intergovernmental agreement, cooperation and collaboration is very important. And I agree, and I think that we need to start first with ourselves by setting a good example and being the catalyst, and then start working with other agencies. Another thing I'd like to bring up is, I don't think people are aware that we have 1,600 streetlights in the city of Prescott with outdated old mercury vapor bulbs. And one of the recommendations is changing them out to high-efficiency LED lighting. And if you look at your water bill, every month you pay 75 cents a month for the maintenance of these streetlights. So that's just one example of how we can improve efficiency and save taxpayer dollars. So I completely support this committee. I think that's great. They're willing to volunteer their time and their expertise, and it's not going to cost us anything. But if we can save taxpayer dollars, for me, that would be a great motivation. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, can you tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for coming in today. I think this is very impressive. I was reading this, and several of these phrases in here kind of hit home for me. I've had several takeaways. I made some notes this morning. I think that we, the regional effort, I have no problem with that. I think that that is a lofty goal, and we should probably look into that. But if we're dialing back into here in the city of Prescott and our organization, some of the, kind of maybe the weak points that we do need to address in our city, some of the takeaways from reading your paperwork this weekend that I loved, proactively addressing the deferred maintenance, energy conservation within the city, as several of our members here have brought up, building modernization solutions. We are an aging city, and we do need to take a look at that. And I refer back to our old city hall that we just moved out of not too long ago. Severe deferred maintenance in that building there. Proactive maintenance, that's one of the same things, enacting zero scapeing for new projects, great idea. These are things that we can actually do. $55.6 million in potential lifecycle savings for the city, 100% self-funding. I liked that a lot in there. And leveraging $2.7 million in strategically targeted grants. Go after those grants. I think that's another great idea. We need all the help we can do. The staff is busy. I understand that they've got bigger fish to fry in many ways. But the help from a community organization like this, especially specialists, as you all have very impressive backgrounds, that can only help us in the long run. So thanks again for coming forward.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank you both. I learned a lot doing not only the pre-reading, but listening to your presentation. One of the things that, coming from another big corporate America company, Procter &amp; Gamble, I'm really used to a drive for cost savings. And I'm disturbed by some of the public comments that I see on social media accounts that, you know, this council has been only focused on raising costs and raising prices. And so I was particularly happy, reading this while on vacation, and the Snyder report in particular, to see a real focus on what I'm used to, which is targeted cost savings projects and return on investment and business case analysis. That's how you get things done. But when your resources are limited, and frankly, given, you know, the budget situation will continue to be limited, I think we've pushed staffing, my, perhaps, you know, we can, you know, with Prop 478, we have some more room now, but the voters wanted all of that to go to public safety. So what I'm super excited about here, and I've actually brought this up on one or two other focuses of our five-year strategic plan, is that we are absolutely blessed with a rich community of retirees who are free, who want to help, who have connections all over the place, and that we can use on multiple aspects of our general plan. But I keep looking down at the general, our city manager here, because I think working groups is the breakthrough to staff versus more committees. I've gotten the sense in the year here that committees are viewed as burdensome and extra work as compared to a working group where there's some local experts that you know them, they know you, and they can just, staff can turn around and tap into them and give them projects, I think looks like help. But from the dais, we can't demand that. We can demand delivering cost savings, but how is the purview of our city leadership over here? So I am excited about it, but I do believe option two is the breakthrough in multiple topics and your expertise and your, I appreciated you doing your resumes outlining that, because it really shows, you know, you have municipal backgrounds, you have corporate backgrounds, you have expertise on these topics, and you're sitting here saying, let me help you, city of Prescott. And I'm very thankful for your time.
Councilmember Rusi again.
Thank you. I would just like to stress some of the elements that were in your options. It's a fact that we are in a 30-year drought, and we're already living in a desert. Plus, we're two degrees higher than normal. And this unfortunately is going to be our new normal going forward. So your first element is water resources, and we're already working on that. And your second is wildfire protection, healthy forests and grass. Flooding, we have, I forget how many hundreds low-water crossings we have here in the city of Prescott. And I remember a couple of years ago, we did have the creeks running as high as I've ever seen them. Energy use, we've already covered that. Saving energy, saving taxpayer dollars. Agriculture and land use, and this also, item D, invest in conservation of high-quality natural open space to preserve ecosystem health. We're going to be talking about that later on in our, preserving it, in our voting session. Community and organizational capacity building, I think that's where we get into the regional cooperation, interagency, intra-governmental collaboration. So I support this 100%, and I hope to bring this back to council in a voting session so that we can get this going on a more formal basis. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think there's any question that, as a council, we are receptive to your message, and we would like to move forward in some capacity. But I think what staff usually needs from council is direction. And I don't think we've provided our staff with direction, whether we would like to pursue organizational option one or organizational option two. I appreciated Councilwoman Forworth's comments about option two. But I think we should have a discussion amongst ourselves as a council so that we can provide direction to staff. So I think that's the next step. So I just want to point that out, because we're all saying the same thing, but let's take it to the next step. Let's make a decision. Let's provide direction.
Well, I'll weigh in a little bit on this. I think option two is something I could support. I think we have a number of very targeted, beneficial projects that could be initiated. I think the energy audit is one that is a deliverable, that could be measured for its effectiveness. There's a couple other areas in here I think that would also fall into that category. Establishing a citizens committee with a large number of members and having such a broad-based list of concerns to work with kind of reminds me of the Workforce Housing Committee that's been meeting for years and hasn't come up with a single recommendation yet. So I think working with a working group that's focused on these deliverables, that we can look at the details on and be able to measure their effectiveness if they're adopted, is a way of establishing, I think, an area that the citizen volunteers could work with. And as those deliverables are delivered, and as we see the results from them, then we could add more focus on additional phases to work with. And maybe at that point, we can see the justification for a citizens committee to be established to look at some of these little more nebulous and difficult areas to determine whether they're truly valuable and not focus too much on analysis without measurable results.
Councilmember Rusi again.
Oh, I would just like to invite our city manager to make some comments if he so wishes. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate all that's been said. I agree, this is a great presentation, a great area for us to be pursuing. What I think I'm hearing from the council, can you hear me okay? Let me move this. There we go. What I think I'm hearing from the council is an interest in pursuing sustainability activities and activities that will drive kind of cost savings and improvement of our operations, that there's interest in collaborating with the community to do so, and that we could move in that direction with the support of council. Happy to refine that if I need to.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, City Manager, what you said. I just want to, I agree with what I think I heard Councilwoman Forworth, sorry. It's always difficult for me, I don't know why. And the mayor saying, where I think the idea of option two is a good idea, it's a good first kind of effort, and you can kind of refine from there, and maybe even identify some of those intergovernment agreements that could be established, and whether or not a permanent sort of committee would
not a permanent sort of committee would be appropriate. But I think the idea of getting, in some ways, a working group that can provide ideas to council, or to staff specifically, to deliver on that objective probably is more efficient than establishing a committee, to the mayor's comments around workforce housing. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Kathy's question to the city manager. I think it would be helpful to the mayor and council for staff to, or management, to give us some direction as to what you think would be most helpful to city staff to be productive, to make something happen so that we're not spinning wheels. Is it option one or is it option two? I'm hearing mostly from us, option two, but I'd like to know if, you know, I think from you, to follow up on Kathy's question. And if you need to get back to us, I think you can get back to us after you talk to your management team and say, you know, this is something we're discussing, what would be most helpful to give us direction from the council.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said. I think, going back to Councilwoman Forworth's comments, for staff, formal committees tend to be additional work and additional bosses on top of what we've already got, where working groups can be helpful. I really like the idea that she was talking about of, you know, we have a lot of talented experts throughout the community on a lot of different topics. And this is an opportunity for us to maybe figure out, how can we work with the community, not just for the community, to get the kind of results that we would want to see overall for everyone. And so I see opportunity there. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but with, again, with option two, what I'm hearing mostly is there's interest from the council in pursuing these kinds of things more actively. And then we can figure out the, exactly the how and what that partnership looks like. And again, what I like about that is maybe then we can replicate that with experts in other areas and really expand our capacity as a city to get things done that would be a unique to Prescott sort of thing, but would be really, really cool. So I agree with what I'm hearing, and I think that general direction to go pursue these kinds of initiatives, working with, I think it'd be a combination of public staff and corporate, and chase down some good results for the community, including updating our HVAC controls. That's coming.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, final comment. I really think it would be helpful to get representatives from Schneider Electric to come up here and give a presentation. For example, we're in the process of designing several new fire stations, and it would be helpful if we could have some fire stations that were up to date and energy efficient. So thank you very much.
Mayor Protam Kentelme.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably a question for both Joe and Allen. If we, is there any downside to choosing option two with the working group? I'm fine with it, by the way. But I want to make sure that we don't preclude ourselves from getting any of these grants if they're not officially tethered to the city.
I think with that option, any grant applications that would need to be from the city would be from the city. We would just ask the group to help us write them.
Okay.
The, if you're looking at downside or trade-offs, I think under option one, you would have a group providing advice and counsel directly to the council. Normally, that's limited to policy direction, and you're crafting some sort of a policy that then you hand to staff to go and do.
But couldn't we do that anyway? If they came in front of us as a working group and we saw a policy suggestion, we could still move forward on that regardless of whether they were a formal committee or a working group?
Well, so the council could always say, hey, staff, we'd like to see a policy on something.
Okay.
And then staff could work with the working group to say, hey, you know, we could use some help developing this and making it fantastic. So that's, it's always an option for the council to ask us to work on policy. The working or the advisory committee just provides a group of citizens to provide input into a policy process versus staff and the council, who are obviously citizens and elected to represent all of the citizens. So it's just, depending on what you want to do, if we want to be writing grants and getting stuff done, I think the direction to staff to go do it and then incorporate community involvement is fantastic, and we'll go do that.
Okay, so just to recap, there's no downside to doing the working group now. And I'm looking at that more as a stepping stone. Let's try the working group out, see what comes, and then maybe in another year, year and a half, or two years, we evaluate whether or not we want to bring them into a formal committee.
I think the decision between a working group and a formal committee has more to do with purpose. So if you'd like them to be active with writing grants and helping with projects, I think the working group is probably more appropriate. If you'd like them to be focused on policy and providing guidance for council and recommendations for council without that action, then the committee is more appropriate, and either action could be done at any time.
Thank you.
Yeah, the way I see it is that the first option advisory committee is information going from the committee upwards to council. And essentially, the working group is the opposite. Council gives direction on goals, and the working group puts that forth. The question becomes, who creates the working group? If council creates the working group, which you can, then we're subject to open meeting laws and so forth, and so it's got those requirements. If we're just, if the citizens create their own working group and council directs staff to work with that group, then you don't worry about the open meeting law concerns and so forth, and just get that information and establish those partnerships.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to ask if there's any public input on this topic.
I think we have one more comment from council, Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. To get back to what you both said down there, and Joe, I really believe that having a working group that reports to staff the areas, now, this particular group might span a couple of departments, as I see it. So maybe, you know, it's in your office somewhere. Another group that's, I'm just going to say, economic development, could just report to just that director, for example. So I just think how you structure this is up to you for what best works for you. What we care about is the results and making the results against our general plan. So I don't think we're going to be prescriptive on the how-to. That's where I was coming from when I first spoke up. For me, this is an extension of your staff. Think of it that way. And how you manage it and how you use it. If it produces the results on the timing we've committed to on the general plan, or it beats the timing we've committed to, that's a bonus for the citizens. And it puts more citizens actively involved in helping this city deliver against our plan versus passively. And so I think active is much more positive. So I'm wrapping up on number two, reporting to you. And if you want our input on how to charter it, or you want our input on who of the monk's staff, depending on the topic, if this works out, come on back and bring it on, and we'll be happy to give you our input. But I think you just got a bunch of awesome people to work for you, work for us, I should say.
All right. Well, thank you again. I think we hear a majority's support for option two. So you can create your working group and start working with us and the staff and the leadership to focus on a couple of these high-value projects, and we can monitor their effectiveness and see how that develops over time. Do we have any public comment?
We do.
Tom Rusing, Prescott, Arizona. I had the privilege of being part of the local working group that analyzed the report from the U of A regarding their climate, regional climate assessment, or Quad City Climate Assessment. And their strong recommendation was to have local groups help the cities tackle this. And I appreciate the thoughtful comments coming from the council, so I didn't feel I had a lot to add. But I think regional cooperation, as in all of these things, is essential. All we have to do is look at the problems in California and then on the coast with hurricanes, and in the Midwest with increasing ferocity of storms, to know that it's very critical for a city to be sustainable and resilient in the face of things to come to protect its future. So I'm encouraged by the discussion here. I would also say that I would think this topic should be revisited in a year, just to see if the citizens and the council feel that whatever option you take up is being, is working, and that the public really does have good input, not only to staff, but to the council. So, thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, I think you have your direction. Dallin. All right, we'll move on to our second item, 3B, presentation and discussion regarding a potential amendment to city code related to gas-powered leaf blowers.
Mayor, if you don't mind, Dallin's nodding at me. Do you mind if I start? All right, well, this issue was brought to me by a constituent several months ago, and I asked councilmember, Councilman Montoya, if he'd be my second to bring it up for a study session. And while the constituents, I'm sorry, people are leaving, because I think this is equally important. Come on, guys. It has to do with resiliency in the environment. Anyways, his primary concern was noise, but, and noise is a concern for me, but I think even more important to me is the environmental impact of leaf blowers. I've done some internet sleuthing and research on this topic, and I do want to spend a few minutes introducing this topic, and then we can discuss it. But the problem with small engines, such as leaf blowers, is that they emit far more harmful pollutants than gas engines that have, like, a catalytic converter on it that's going to control that. They emit harmful air pollutants like carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, harmful products like benzene and formaldehyde. And so I want to share just a few pieces of information from a few links on the internet. This is from the Environment Texas. Across the nation, a consistent and similar event occurs daily. The sound and smell of mowers, blowers, whackers, trimmers fill the air. And they're forced to listen to the often ear-damaging noise that are similarly infuriated. In addition to the sound, small engines that run landscape equipment spew more air pollution than most cars and trucks. All this has meant that in the past few years, almost 100 cities in the United States have banned or limited the use of landscaping equipment, including Dallas's recent proposal making it its way through city council. So that's just an example of one community, or about 100 communities nationwide have banned leaf blowers. When it comes, this is another link, when it comes to small engines and lawn and garden care, it's really counterintuitive. The stuff is really disproportionately causing a lot of air pollution, health challenges, and disproportionately contributing to climate change. And, you know, one of our strategic plan items, number four, preserving the natural environment and Prescott livability, certainly noise is an issue, and we'll talk about that just for a second. I thought it was interesting, and one of city manager Kimball's updates in the last two weeks was about noise in the city, particularly vehicle noise. But I'm sure all of us had experiences in our neighborhoods where we have to listen to the noise of whackers, trimmers, blowers, and things like that, and it can be annoying. But it's interesting that they make the comment that a one-hour operation of a leaf blower is equivalent to a car driving 1,100 miles. So a car operating for 15 consecutive hours produces the same amount of pollutants as a leaf blower for one hour. So it's very harmful to the environment, and I think it will improve our livability. I think it's in line with our strategic plan, preserving the natural environment, and it also, in my opinion, reduce the amount of noise in our community. And so I personally am supportive of a ban on leaf blowers, and I think there's an easy option, which is obviously rechargeable leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers, which are very common now on the market. So I just wanted to introduce that topic for discussion.
Councilmember Rusing.
Over the years, I've noticed that these gas-powered leaf blowers are damaging our hearing. They put out toxic fumes, and the noise is deafening. There's nothing like, on a wonderful morning, sitting down at the Wild Iris on that beautiful patio with the landscaping crew on the patio, on the property next door, with the gas-powered leaf blowers blasting away on a few leaves at the parking lot next door. I would like to recommend that maybe the city become more proactive and start educating HOAs, homeowners, and the landscaping crews, maybe with just a letter with this information, asking them to look at their practices and maybe on their own voluntarily, making some improvements. And, you know, talking with homeowners that hire landscapers that use the gas leaf blowers. I think that would be a very important step. I think just, without any public input or discussion, just saying, hey, let's pass an ordinance banning these, because, you know, there are some, like, maybe large jobs out, you know, in the periphery somewhere, that maybe a gas leaf blower might be helpful because batteries maybe aren't enough, don't have enough power or longevity for the project. But I think we need to start with public education first.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I supported Eric in bringing this forward, because I think it was worth having a discussion. I'm probably not at a point where I'm in support of an outright ban on gas-powered blowers right now, only because I feel like I don't have enough information. And I'd like to, I guess, to me, part of this conversation is maybe having staff look at this and look at what the other communities have done, that have done this, and what are, whenever I think about anything that we do up here, I kind of, the first thing I kind of ask myself is about unintended consequences. And that's kind of where my head goes to on this item, is I think, Councilman Moore, you've made a lot of compelling arguments about some of the negative impacts. But what I'd like to know is, what are unintended consequences? What are ramifications that we're not thinking about and seeing? And also, is there a middle ground that gets us kind of in a more positive direction, kind of what Councilmember Rusing's talking about, where we start by educating and then seeing where that gets us and seeing if there's some buy-in and support around it? I also think about, you know, our water rebate policy system, where we encourage people do kind of more better practices around water. Maybe there's something similar we can do with landscaping companies or homeowners, or, to your point, Councilmember Rusing, homeowner associations. So those are just my thoughts.
Councilman Gambogi.
I think this council is having a problem setting priorities. There's eight cities in California that ban leaf blowers. California is a state that is banning ICE engines. For those of you in Rio Lindo, that's an internal combustion engine. When we firewise our communities, we're not rarely using a leaf blower. We're using a chainsaw and a hedge trimmer. So do they go electric, too? I think the marketplace will settle all of these once batteries become as productive as an ICE engine. I think the marketplace will settle out. There are far bigger fish to fry, which, a term that I've used before, that we need to resolve. We need to resolve the rodeo. We need to resolve the expansion, or not expansion, of 89. We need to resolve the airport, and we need to come up with a solid water plan where everybody agrees. We need to resolve the airport and we need to come up with a solid water plan where everybody agrees. This is not a priority.
Do we have any other comments from the council? Do we have any public comment?
I do not have any public comment cards, Mayor.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, when I was reading the pre-work for this, I agree with Councilman Gamboge's comments. This is from the woman who got for Christmas a battery-powered leaf blower because I'm a fanatic about my yard and I can't do it with a gas machine. It's too big for me. So, but I do think that's up to the private citizens to manage. I'm worried about the unintended consequences of snow blowers amongst the other equipment that with a retired community, we do outsource a lot of our services. And, you know, speaking of bigger fish, the discussion about business licenses is a much bigger fish for me than going after a couple of small businesses that I hire to do my yard work. So I appreciate the comments and this might be one you add to the working group to do some of the analysis and understanding of the opportunity or to do the education that I like Councilwoman Rusing brought up. But I too don't really want to make this a priority for staff in light of the other things we've really got to get done in the next 12 months.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilman Gamboge's comments. I'm not trying to add to the list of things that we need to do. I think this is a very small ask and I do realize there are much bigger and more important issues. But like I said, I think it is consistent with our strategic plan, which is the natural environment. And when you're adding pollutants at an unprecedented amount to the air in which we live, I think that's really important for the natural environment. It's a livability issue, quality of life issue. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say that I find gas-powered leaf blowers annoying. But I also know that if you want to be able to have a landscape company work on your property and get it done in a short amount of time and low cost, the gas-powered ones work a lot faster and they're probably more cost-effective even though they have some very negative consequences. So I agree with Councilwoman Forworth that I have some weed whackers that are battery-operated and I try to use those as much as I can, but they have limitations. So I think also the improvement in lithium batteries that are available and some of these small do-it-yourself pieces of equipment will improve over time. And I think the marketplace will kind of make the decision for us as these become as good, if not better, than the gas-powered. And if enough people talk to their landscaping companies about asking them to use a, maybe an electrical leaf blower rather than a gas-powered one, eventually I think you'll see an improvement in that area. But I just don't like to see our local government get involved in these kind of, I'll call it nanny projects that I think we should just leave it to the local marketplace to make the decision and the local users of these landscaping companies to make their preferences known. I think we're concluded here. This study session meeting is adjourned.